County Commission.
Pulled the draft off.
Pulled the draft off of that ordinance.
That was the only changes they made?
Mm-hmm. Instead of just getting rid of it entirely.
It would have been easier just to erase it.
He's not gonna take over the business?
You guys, you you don't have to sign up. I will call on you. Okay. We're not calling on him. Okay, it's six o'clock. Man, that was a long time ago one day.
That's that's his wife checking to make sure he's really here.
Yeah.
She's got her always some on me for sure.
Alrighty. Let's call the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five San Juan County Utah Planning Commission meeting to order. Commission. Members in attendance. Cody Nielsen, Melissa Riggs. TC Garcia, Shay Walker, Lloyd Wilson is did Ann.
And is online.
Okay. Ann Austin.
I called him DJ last.
Oh, I.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Staff. County Administrator Mac McDonald. County Attorney Gents Nielsen. That guy clearing the back.
Corey.
Corey Coleman. Just hiding back there. Just a little bit of information. I know a lot of you served with Mel Nelson. He passed away on Friday.
Oh, really?
Oh, really? Sorry at all.
So. He was from here, but he was served on our board for a long time. So. Bad deal, but we will remember him. And he was firm in his belief, you know, he is an engineer, but.
Well, me and him argued a lot.
Liked his cats.
Yes.
Yes, he did.
That's how he resigned. Sent a picture of his cat.
I remember.
Okay, would somebody like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
High pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conflict of interest. I would like to think that we'd all say we have a conflict of working on two things, well, one thing. But anybody have a conflict? None?
No, sir.
No. Okay. Pro of minutes. I did see some grammar. Grammar. Put Melissa.
Oh, I'm not going into the grammar, but I'll go through the spelling.
Okay.
So, so. On page three, the first graph under public comment.
Melissa.
It's just a little one. It's like Mexican cat.
Is Mexican cat still in there?
No, but no. But but we're not talking about banding.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
So on page three.
Page three, Marjorie. Marjorie Talking, first paragraph, just talking about blending.
Okay.
Bandaid.
Yeah, I was close.
There was something else.
Okay.
And I didn't write it.
Okay, we'll make that fix.
You know. Having only a three-hour meeting with Lloyd in charge, that's pretty dang good.
Just gonna say it was Ann and Melissa, they kept it going.
Okay, I can't. I should have highlighted that, but I didn't. So. I'll entertain a motion.
A move that we approve them minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October.
Ninth.
Ninth. Two thousand twenty-five. As amended. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, Ann. Okay. Public comments. We'll take in-house first. You had to have signed up.
You didn't.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Anything that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. State your name.
My name's Connor Simmons. I own two properties in in Spanish Valley and have followed the zoning process for about three years. I'm here because I care about the community's fruit future. I spend four to six weeks a year here with my family. It is our second home. I live in Cache County. I drove down today for this meeting to share something I hope will be helpful. Recently, I talked to an older friend about what's happening here. He shared a story from when he was young. Cache County, like many rural counties, had almost no economic opportunity at the time. His father opposed growth because he feared it would ruin the county. My friend was forced to move to Salt Lake so he could provide for his family. Cache County moved forward with a thoughtful zoning and encouraged business in the right areas while still protecting agriculture. Today, Cache County has both a strong econ- economy and has a good rural feel that people value. My friends, my friend was able to move back because jobs existed in the county plan for growth instead of delaying it. Even though my friend's dad was angry about the pig farm being in his backyard. Um, he did not get, he did get to eat the bacon by having his children and grandchildren grow up near him. I believe Spanish Valley is in a similar moment. It's your golden goose, um, the Spanish Valley. This process has been delayed for a long time and the uncertainty is holding back responsible investments that could strengthen the entire county. We just need a clear, simple zoning framework, even one that will be refined over time. This would give business and family stability. You don't have to make it perfect on the first try. I always say imperfect action is way better than just dreaming about how to do it perfectly. The southeastern Utah parks generate roughly four hundred and fifty million annually for nearby communities. Spanish Valley specifically is uniquely positioned to capture and manage some of that economic activity in a responsible way that benefits locals. Again, it's a golden goose. Don't miss out on it. There are diverse viewpoints in this room and they all matter, but we need business, affordable housing, and to maintain property rights. Growth always requires trade-offs, even building a highway that allowed me to get here in six hours required difficult decisions. Farms and homes were lost, but those decisions ultimately form the backbone of our state's economic strength. Good planning isn't about choosing who wins or loses. It's about creating a system where the entire community can thrive. I urge you to quickly finalize a workable plan that supports locals, encourages responsible development and business use, and set San Juan County up for success for decades to come. Our kids deserve a place where they can build a future. I would also love an update on the timeline for the new zoning to go live. Thanks.
Thanks, Connor.
You had that down to three minutes. I mean, you nailed this.
That's really good. My name's Daniel. I live in Spanish Valley. I just wanted to speak in support of the rezone and um, and kind of expediting it. I don't know where it's at. I also would love to hear uh, about that, but I think if it can just sort of be pared down to really focus on affordability for homes and incentivizing some business. I think San Juan has an incredible opportunity to be like the kind of the value capital and the place to be and the and the place to come and uh, affordably live. And so I just, um, yeah, I just came to to urge that along and and speak my support of you guys and thank you all for your hard work.
Thanks, Daniel. Any other public comment?
What? I never seen.
Any in ha- or uh, online? No hands up? Lexi Walker has a comment, I'm sure. Okay. Move moving on. Legislative items number two. Consideration and approval of a one-year extension to the conditional use permit number yes for U-Haul in Spanish Valley. Mac McDonald.
Okay, with the requirements of the conditional use permit, um, when you kind of give the findings and you add, we add the additional conditions on here. It's always sometimes can be a challenge to meet all those conditions in a timely manner. There's some party here for the U-Haul moving and storage of Moab to be located there and Highway one ninety-one and there's two at the time they applied for two different locations. This one here is the eleven eighteen fifty South Highway one ninety-one, um, that they're asking for an extension. Our ordinance allows for an extension up to one year after the initial year. And so that's what they're asking for. There was, they have provided a letter just kind of explaining where they were at in the process to satisfy all those conditions. There's a few that are remaining that really kind of looks like it's more on the county getting the information. The engineering drainage plan is something that that we're still waiting on, but we've got to get that. And then the health department and the business license requirement, those are pretty easy. Once we get everything done, but we don't issue a building permit until till they're ready to go. And so that's kind of where they're at. The applicant is online. Those are the three individuals that you seen um, on Google. So if you have any questions for them, they are here, but all they are doing is asking for that extension to to get those final items.
I I have a question about why this is on the agenda. Because I mean, we've had a lot of conditional use permits where we just say, you know, you can get another six month, you know, you can get all these extensions. And they, those people never come back to us. Why, why?
Because it's in our ordinance that the planning commission approves the extensions. I would love not to.
We we would act, we'd actually talked about in our new ordinance, allowing staff to do that. We just haven't. Is this application no changes?
No changes on the application. That's kind of confusing on the date. Sorry about that. This was literally taken off of the previous staff report with the conditions updated. But no, nothing else on here has changed. They're still continuing forward as planned originally.
I have a clarifying question.
Okay, Ann.
Um. Can you explain the encroached upon zone or or area on the map? I'm just wanting to understand what who encroached? What's, what is that about?
I think that was SITLA.
No, Jason Property Owner. Kathy, I don't know if you or Brett want to answer that one?
Yeah, we can. And and hi, my name is Brett Kalash. I'm with Hillside Architecture. Um, we're kind of the architect of record on this project. I I can speak quickly. You know, we we got into the property, um, and as we got into the property and started looking at where, um, you know, our understanding of where the property was and where the uh, things were, we realized that the neighbor, uh, who I believe originally owned this part of the property had built, um, they, I think they, as they were building, I think as they were phasing their build out, they ended up building um, some of the pavement, uh, assuming that they were going to continue their their building development to the to the plan east. So what we did, I mean, we've just kind of noticed that 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 land was encroached upon. That's something that we're kind of working on internally. That's more of a U-Haul is working with the neighbor uh, to remedy that. Um, but that shouldn't have any impact with the city or with that. I think what it might do is it may at at one point or at some point in time will either um, let let bygones be bygones, or that's kind of the, it's U-Haul's directive to kind of figure out what they're going to do with that. And there may be some kind of re, um, you know, a a lot line adjustment of some sort at some point in time, but that would be kind of separate from this uh, this CUP extension exercise.
Okay, and and so. And yet unrelated, but another encroachment um, was mentioned with UDOT. So I I was interested interested in the access. Um, will there be some access between the two parcels at all, or will they both have separate accesses?
You and and just to clarify, you're just talking about both parcels from U-Haul, correct? Both U-Haul parcels? Yeah, both U-Haul parcels are going to be, are separate. Um, they're actually, if you, um, there's actually quite a bit of land in between them. Um, I'm happy to share my screen if that helps and I can kind of show you on a map what that looks like, um, of where those two parcels are. Uh, they would not be connected. So do I need to share my screen? Yeah.
That makes sense. I've got the maps, but um, the the one behind the business park or in that zone will be accessed from the existing access to the business park?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and there was some issue about SITLA.
There was, and and I think maybe.
Did that get resolved?
I don't believe it fully has been resolved. I I know what I had heard previously was that was kind of the county who had been working towards that. Um, and we hadn't gotten full response. That might be a back um, question, or maybe he can kind of give an update, update to that part.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna become a problem down the line at all, or if it's like right now, if it's been sorted out, you know, as we move forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And Mac, do you have any update on the the SITL line? Or that there's, there's been a a couple of changes in regards just from a transparency standpoint, um, where, you know, Drex Johnson is the owner's rep who's on the phone call now. Uh, previous to that, there was a gentleman named Brad Ling, um, who was kind of taking more of a peripheral perspective, purview on this. So he kind of originally is the one that actually was down in uh, San Juan County for the original CUP and got that approved. Uh, during that hearing, there was talk of this SITLA, um, and it's kind of been something that we've bounced back and forth um, with Christine Bushnell, I believe, um, of your team, uh, for a little while. Um, it has, we haven't gotten the full update, but there was quite a few things that had to go back and forth uh, between the county and the SITLA group kind of that were organizing that. Uh, we'd be happy to follow up on that with your your staff and and get that righted or make sure that that's got full clarity, if that's beneficial.
And this is Mac. Flying blind on this SITLA issue, but I can talk to them just to see, see what they've got going on.
Let me refresh you. So when this first came to us, Ali spoke out and said that there was an issue because the the road going into the Moab Business Park, the access point was SITLA's, and there was never permission given. My argument to that was you created three huge buildings for the Moab Business Park and then seven other buildings plus Knightley Reynolds, a laundromat, you can't park all of the same, but now we're going to come back and say, no, you can't go across there.
Because of the approach.
Yep.
Right, so it just for future development too, besides U-Haul, whoever else, like it just seems like something that needs to be put to bed, you know?
Well, and it will once the Loves goes in, because their road goes right through there. That that'll be their one in and one out over by the other U-Haul on Sunny Acres.
Okay.
So maybe it's a, it's something that um, SITLA's interest will resolve when they move forward with another project.
Yeah. Thanks, Ann.
And then that la- the other parcel to the north adjacent to Sunny Acres, that has not changed either. I didn't see it on this, in this packet, but your other parcel is still going to be indoor storage?
Correct, that's correct. Yeah, and we're we're at that. And that's and that's the the other storage facility, which is on, if you're, if you know the Love site, it's on the north and just a little bit. It's the northern part and it aligns with off uh, one ninety-one. Um, so and that's the same storage. We're just working through the final uh, building permit plan check comments on that facility.
And still the access on that map looks like it'll be from Sunny Acres, not the highway.
It is, correct, correct, correct. Yep, access is off of Sunny Acres.
Does that involve any kind of change to the highway to access Sunny Acres from the highway?
No, there's no.
And did you see the letter from UDOT?
I did. They have no issues with the proposed changes to the U-Haul site. Not sure what the changes are. But yeah, it does say there'll be a need to be an encroachment permit. Yeah, I mean, for me, this is just informational. I'm, you know, I'm not arguing the um, approval of the extension, just wanting to know if there was going to be better highway or access onto Sunny Acres from the highway than what is there now.
I don't believe it's changing a whole lot. I can, um, if you bear with me, I can pull it up and I can show you it if you'd like to see. Bear with me just a second.
Hey, Mac. There's a mix in here. So we're looking at, we're looking at the eleven eight fifty um, Highway one ninety-one.
Yeah.
But then when I look at this one, this permit twenty-four oh twenty-four A is Sunny Acres and Highway one ninety-one. The impact fees were for the Sunny Acres one. The UDOT was for the Sunny Acres one.
This was original to the to the packet.
Okay, so are are we doing both of them right now, though?
On the extension is only the one parcel.
On the, on the eleven eight.
On the eleven, yeah.
The Sunny Acres. No, no. Eleven eight fifty, the one in the business park. Okay, just making sure, just clarifying.
Wait, the extension is just for the business park parcel? And not the one at Sunny Acres? Because in the packet, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I'd like clarification on that too. I was looking at the packet just prior to the meeting and it looks like the letter um, on the packet uh, and the application number are for the northern site, if that helps, um, the site above Loves. Uh, while the app of the the image is for the southern, the southeastern uh, parcel.
Okay, do you have another image that you can share? I think you have access to share it on.
But but I was gonna ask, yeah, I can, let me see.
Yeah, because our conditional use permit number is twenty-four oh two four A, which is for the Sunny Acres and Highway one ninety-one, and then this conditional use for eleven eight fifty is twenty-four oh two four A also. So they got the same number on them.
They came in together to planning originally.
Right.
I'm not, and Mac, I apologize. I don't know if I have the ability to share my screen. You might be granted.
Here, let me stop sharing and see if you can share it now.
I can. Let's see. Okay, let me know if you can see my screen.
We can. All right, thank you.
Okay, so um, so just to, and to answer your first question on encroachment, um, and Kathy can back me up on this. Uh, this is the, this is the site plan for the northern properties. So just to orient everybody real quick. Uh, this is the north, I'll call this the northern property or site one. Um, this is where we're doing the controlled indoor storage facility at this location. Um, the other site uh, is this one that's down in this. I think you guys called that that business park. So this is where we'll have what we call the the showroom is in this existing facilities. Um, that's already, I believe, currently um, in operation. I think that's come back online. Uh, and then the U-Box building, which will house their uh, U-Haul's U-Boxes, um, which are kind of their storage, kind of on demand, if you will. Um, that gets kind of shipped and then stored. Uh, so it's going to be down on this site. We'll call that site number two. Um, so regarding Ann's original comment about encroachment on the highway here, um, I believe we were only required to do an encroachment because of this, just the improvements to the road here and and the fact that we were kind of this little, this little patch here, then these two patches as we connected to utilities and as we tied in the road itself. Um, as you can kind of see from our develop, you know, this is the site plan, the development side of it. Um, you know, we're really kind of limited. We've got a a retention pond over here, but there really isn't anything to do with any improvements on the road uh, itself or the access point to that road. So just to to finish that or wrap that up. Uh, as we jump to the extension letters, um, I think we, you know, in an in an abundance of caution, um, Kathy uh, and I, we prepared two extension letters. We've prepared an extension letter for what we call site, site one, um, which was that additional kind of extension to the conditional use permit, uh, twenty-four zero twenty-four A. Um, that was the one that I believe is in your packet. Um, and then in addition, we also emailed a second packet, uh, or a second extension, uh, which was the for the other site, which is the site two, uh, which is the twenty-four oh twenty-four B. Um, so maybe that's the best place to restart, if that makes sense.
So it's two, yeah, so A and B, twenty-four oh twenty-four.
Yeah. So and 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 then just as the. So and then it's just a quick update as to where we are on the properties. Um, this property, uh, which is the site one property or twenty-four, uh, twenty-four oh twenty-four A um, is the one that's on the site one. Um, we have submitted this drawing uh, package for permit. Um, we have gone through our first round of plan check of of comments. We've returned those. We've then since got a second round. Um, so we're just short a permit. Um, we're looking to get back in within the month, I would say, for that final round of plan check review uh, to get this building fully permitted, uh, to get this this project kind of moving and and getting the wheels from there. We're going to take it out to bid. Um, that'll probably be a a month or so, and then we'll be looking to get going on construction. Uh, I'd say probably realistically, it's kind of the beginning of the year. Um, Drex could kind of firm that up if that's kind of out of line or kind of um, not true, so. And then uh, on site two, um, site two, we did, uh, you know, we did working with um, U-Haul Corporate. Uh, we did kind of hit a bit of a stalemate as we were trying to look at how this potential encroachment uh, was going to alter or or adjust the sites, um, and how to develop that site in a pragmatic way. Uh, we've since kind of taken a lateral approach where we've realized that the site grading and the site overall isn't really going to be affected. What's going to be affected is the the idea of where we, how the RV coverage storage would look like. Um, you know, U-Haul has identified the Moab area as as an area that that they want to build out, and there's, there's a lot of demand for their facilities and their storage. And there's, there's a lot of demand for their facilities and their storage use, um so. Their hope is to get the U-Box building, which stores that, does that kind of move almost laterally to get this building in. And then to kind of, you know, this this area down here is usually separated, you know, these are all covered storage facilities, they're they're permitted separately than this building anyways. So the idea is, let's get in there, let's get the site regraded, let's get this building built. And then we can kind of, you know, figure out what those, you know, kind of do a reassessment of needs um and build out that. Uh with, you know, with the, with the uh taking into account this encroached area or this this area that's been kind of developed. And just to circle back, now that I've got the screen on the encroached area. The encroached area is is, you know, it's encroached is an interesting word. Uh the property line, um this where this fence is, is not where the actual property line is for the property. Um the property line exists probably about here. Probably in the middle of that driveway is where the real property falls, and again, I think what was happening is as this group was building out these units. Um as you can kind of assume, it makes a lot more sense to build out that whole pad for vehicular circulation than to just have half of it. Um so that's why they built it, I think when they did their property lines, they may not fully actualize what was going on. Uh when they sold off this parcel of property, um and and that's kind of where we're trying to just kind of un- unpack the pieces and parts of that. So just to circle back to give you all the the pieces and parts as we have them.
Are we looking to approve to?
With only one in the packet, can we approve?
Well, I think the ordinance is automatic, so like Melissa said, they didn't. Used to even come, I don't know that it's really required, is it to come for? Commission, so I think you can approve them both for that reason.
I saw you, no reason in not. You wanna motion? I motion to extend. The conditional use permits on the two locations for. Um U-Haul, which one being the corner of Sunny Acres and one ninety-one. And the other being eleven eight fifty South Highway one ninety-one for additional year.
Hold second.
Okay, got a motion in a second to extend. The conditional use permit for these two properties. For another year. Any further discussion? And all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. What is this read dot AI meeting notes that's showing up on the screen?
What are you looking at?
Go back and show the screen of all the participants. What is the read dot AI meeting notes?
So Google has the read dot AI, so it's capturing your transcription, that's what we're. That's Mexican cat instead of Mexican hat. So that's one of them, and then there was somebody else that had AI before. If you have like an AI transcriber program, it automatically follows you to meetings and that, but. This one is the Google.
And this is something that we know is on here.
When I, I don't know if you were watching, but when I hit record, so Google is also recording at the same time. And it's also transcribing, that's this little button up in the corner. Um so right here is the AI that's. Pulling everything that you're saying, hopefully, Mexican hat instead of Mexican cat. And so is that emailed to everybody that's online? No, to me.
Just to you.
Just helps us do the minutes, and so.
I didn't know that.
Captures, and that's, yeah, the blending branding.
Okay.
Type things.
It's good to know, thank you.
Good question, though.
We're being watched.
Do you give permission for this to be recorded?
So we're we're recording, it's kind of three dimensional, you have the, we have the tape recording that's going on, the. The um digital recorder that's running, we've got this one as well, and our Phil safe is, it's being broadcast live on YouTube. So YouTube captures it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch.
Good question, though. Who's the AI person?
Okay, number three, general plan discussion and direction.
Okay, so I appreciate Melissa's help in this, she had gone through and just kind of reordered items on here. There's nothing really substantially changed that she had in there, it was just really a flow. And so she went through and provided the documentation, I sent that to you, you should have been included in that. All I did is place it back in the general plan um column form. So it matches with the rest, and then. Took her language, those modifications and placed it in here. I did add the survey results from the citizens that kind of in matched what we had in the past. Now you just kind of have updated survey results from. From that survey, I provided the survey to you, so you all had that as well in your packets. If there was any questions, but this is kind of a a summation of. The results that they had from that that survey. So I included in that, other than that, um there's no other changes um. Other than just the flow of that from the past. There are, you know, if there's some decisions that we need to make tonight. Um one of them was, do we include the recreational support zoning language? Last time you talked about just taking that zone out altogether, keeping the zones that we have instead of making a new one. Um so if that's the case, it's just, we would either have to include. Recreational support language or just exclude it altogether, which is fine when I looked at kind of the code requirements. For uh what needed to be in the general plan, uh it doesn't state that you have to, you have to specify all of the zones. That are included on a land use plan, um but just that general language, general location of. Of what the overall vision for the county is, and I think when you look through the land use designations in here. It kind of, it captures that pretty well, um there was a question last time on the map. Um I provided the the full, hopefully you were able to see in the packet, that full entire map on there. Uh one of the things that we touched on last planning commission meeting was. You know, why on the map does it show this mixed use area? When you read the language in um the general plan about the mixed use area, then it. It kind of addresses why, why the public lands are in a mixed use, so that. They're not seeing it as a specific zone, but a use. And on the map, it kind of covers those public lands as a multiple, multiple use. Area overall that includes public lands, um as well as agriculture and. Kind of that overall use of public lands that you see. So that language is in the general plan itself, so when I. Think the the last things that are left on here. Um is is kind of too far, we've got to push this out to the public and that community group. Indicated that they could help us do that. Um and so after today's look and guidance from you, we can make changes and hold off. Another month and capture those changes and bring it back. Or go right to scheduling a public hearing, utilize the community group to get it out further. Than what we advertise on and try to get this for adoption uh here this year. And so especially when we only have December's meeting left for planning commission, unless you want to have a. Special planning commission, it's kind of up to you, so. That's part of, you know, part of the thoughts that I had on here. Um looking at the map itself, I. I entertained that idea, okay, well, maybe we have a public lands designation on on this blue until I read the language in the general plan. On multiple use, and then to me, I was like, okay, that makes sense of why all of this is blue in here. Um the only differences that I look at, if we update the map on here is really more, if you look at Spanish Valley. Uh we still have commercial in Spanish Valley, they have uh this commercial district area. In Grand County, but doesn't really represent a commercial use in Spanish Valley. Let me make this a little bit bigger so you can see it. So I thought, well, maybe it'd be kind of good to pull that color a little bit down further on the commercial district. Um so it represents that a little bit more, LaSalle has a commercial component to it, but not a lot. And so it still makes sense to kind of go that agricultural, that transition um color here with residential. These other ones outside of here, I really don't understand why. They had these commercially used hot zones out here, but. I wasn't here at the time, so I don't know if we take some of those off. Where it doesn't make sense, um kind of give an updated spin on this. Monasor McCreek, you know, kind of has more of a a commercial district now with the dollar store, they get the grocery store going. Kind of a a more of a commercial zone with the hospital and that, um. So it's just kind of ideas for the map, but everything else. I couldn't find a reason to change.
What is this one? This is height, right?
I don't know if that, to me.
Is that like under?
Me too.
That might be needles. You don't pass nothing right there. That's a turnoff, head down to halls.
Going this way. That's the park building, whatever they built, the, you know, Cedar Mesa. I mean, what is that called there?
So what, what is it that we're trying to communicate with this map?
It's on here, let me, let me pull it, um. A shaded guide for the county. Yeah, it doesn't make sense. Plan includes the incorporated territory, we've got that, check that piece, um. At a minimum, the proposed general plan with the accompanying maps, charts, and descriptive. And explanatory matter shall include the planning commission's recommendation, land use element. Um just quickly trying to read here, supposed to have projections for population density, which this. Kind of focuses on, um building intensity recommended for the various land use categories. Incoordinated to integrate the land use element with water preservation, we've got that. Other than that, I don't see any other reason for the map is being able to show where you're pushing development. And in what uses.
Did that answer your question, TC? Would it be worthwhile, I, cause to me this adds. Quite a bit of ambiguity. Maybe it would be worthwhile putting in the map we created that actually has our zones or our land uses. From the proposed ordinance, then would match up with our land use table. I don't know.
If it's visionary, the only thing I worry about that is if you change the zone, you're changing general plan as well. And so where this is, to me, I liked that this is more visionary, higher up, and. You know, when it talks about these transitional areas, you have the map, the heat map representing that transition areas where. The general plan wants us to focus more of the jet, the development around infrastructure. These areas here really have the infrastructure, Eastland, Monasol, Mexican Hat. Um and so that's, that's where visionary wise with the general plan aspect. We're focusing and pushing uh that vision. If you threw in the zones here, I worried, then it gets to where. Now your general plan map has to be a little bit more detailed. Granular, so that you, you take Spanish Valley, um. You got highway commercials, Spanish Valley, residential, you have the flex zones in there, like then that becomes. That becomes distorted on a general plan map, you could. It's up to you guys, how you want to play it, but where it's supposed to be visionary, to me is, I like the high level to it, but. It's up to you guys, I'll do whatever.
No, thanks for the explanation. And it, it wouldn't be a conflict if we kept just these zones. And then our land use wind up with a recreational support. That was a question.
That is correct, I couldn't, when I, when I read through here. That land use element, you want to account for the effect of land use categories and land uses on water demand. And so we can capture, we've captured that in just the statement that we want to cluster. Push more of your development towards infrastructure areas, the cities with the transitional areas. So we're covered there, um. Yeah, it's, you have the planning commission's judgment, they're related to planning of the unincorporated territory. As the county as a whole, but nothing in here tells me in Utah code that. It has to be specific, it wants that you designate the long-term goals, which the goals are in here. And the proposed extent, general distribution and location of land for housing for residents. Uh varying income levels, business, industry, agricultural, recreation. Education, public buildings and grounds, open space and other categories of public and private uses. Of land as they appropriate, uh but it doesn't tell you, you've got a list, your specific zones. Wants you to include a statement of the projections for and standard of population density and building intensity recommended. That's why I think when you're looking at kind of these dots along here, and they've got kind of those varying colors coming through here. Those on a heat map just signify that those are a little bit more intense areas, and they want more of a focus. Towards those, and so that residential, you see that, you know, the broader, you see the commercial in there. You see that transitional area in there, um to focus that attention and drive that, so I think we're covered there. Um other than that. There's, there's nothing in Utah code. That requires specific zones be listed.
When you compare this map to the. Um proposed map, the one that is more high level, or not, it was more specific, I should say. We didn't have a lot of industrial zones like we do on this map, so. I think this map is really misleading in lots of different ways. And the fact that none of us are really sure what some of them indicate, feel like we need. To solve that problem on this.
Let's go to the, to the language, so. In here, for industrial, this designation is for the manufacturing, assembly, storage. Shipping of raw materials and other activities. That support the economic basis, you should, uses should be subject to approval and have no vested rights. To develop in an industrial manner, industrial uses should be regulated in a manner. That adequately mitigates any negative externalities. Caused by the use, industrial uses can be located in places that do not conflict with public lands and recreational opportunities. Industrial uses should be located in their existing utilities or pay the way to extend needed services. So for me, when you look at the map, is that an indication of. Those areas where you have mineral extraction. In the county, uh, I think that's what that is more tailored to.
Well, you know, I'm gonna, um. Follow up on what TC said, I think we need to take a look at the zoning maps that we're proposing and then go from there. Um, rather than use those as a starting point, even though I understand your concern that if we change the zone. We have to change the general plan, but just to give us an idea of what we're putting different places. Um, just compare the two, because if this doesn't look at all like what, what we're.
The zoning map?
The zoning map, I, I think we're in trouble again.
We take a lot of criticism for not following the. You know, the, the land use plans.
I, I think it'd be a really good idea to just sort of plot it out.
So when it was.
In the general plan.
Developed. This was the zoning map.
Right.
That was used and so. Even the general plan map in twenty eighteen didn't match the twenty eleven. I mean, the twenty eleven.
I get that, but that doesn't mean just because it wasn't done right.
And so then you take Spanish Valley. And that's, that's where I, that's my only concern in Spanish Valley, then it gets a little bit more granular in nature than.
Well, I, I.
This map up into like, you know, three zones or voting districts or something where you're looking at us. The county and more bite sized rather than the entire thing. Because we, we, this map was so vague. And incorrect, that's why Kristen and whoever got together with the, the. What is that software, that mapping software? And they were able to create what is now the proposed map. Why? Why can't we integrate that into our general plan? I know you're talking about the, the. Language of the zones, but. It would be at least a little more indicative of what we're looking at and as far as existing use like this map. Those are just little spray painted things that. Um, I guess that's the question is. Is anybody gonna say, well, the general plan? Map is, has this purple. And they think they're in the purple, you know, what I'm saying, is anybody really gonna argue the details of this map? Is it worth changing or is it worth just saying, well, this is about what we've got?
Let's take here, since Trent's here, he can yell at me, we'll use Trent. So you look at the area between, you know, northeast of Monticello. Well, you look at the heat map, it just shows Monticello, but there is a lot of potential for industrial use. In this green area there, you know, from a solar farm. To some oil, gas, um, um, anyways, there's, there's lots there, do we need to color that now? I mean, going forward, I don't think so, I mean, is that just because it's green? Are we maintaining all that green forever? I mean, according to their study, we need more agriculture, but I hate to tell you, there's no water out there. It's not a bad place for some of those industrial uses and the economic growth and. Financial support it brings to the county, so I just don't. I mean, so if we don't color an area, that, I guess that's my problem with the whole ordinance going forward is. If I have one regret and I'd like to go back is. We're trying to mention everything that we might want to have happen someday, this is allowed, this is allowed, this is allowed, this is allowed. And if it's not mentioned, then it's not allowed. And I, I feel like if I have a regret and I'd like to go back, I'd like to change that and be the opposite, you know, like. We should allow more, we should have more freedom, more, we don't need to, to restrict the growth in the future. Cause you don't know what will come, you know, I, I heard a person today, like going forward with everything in the world. You're gonna need all of the above solutions, you know, nuclear, coal, gas, solar, wind. And so that's kind of how I look at this, we need. As many options moving forward and not constrain the landowners and people as much. That, that's just my soapbox, we can do whatever anybody else wants to tell me to do. My give a shit is getting very low.
I think, I think looking at this as a general map is, and the format is fine, but there are some things that I. Look at our last meeting, we approved a thing at Wilson Arch and that's straight purple. And it doesn't meet what we approved at our last meeting. Anywhere in the Wilson Archer on the other side of the hill with the mob under canvas, none of that meets this industrial thing, so there's nothing. It's like if I look at this general map. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong roads here.
I think, I think for what it is, just for the general plan. Without, I mean, because if you were to zoom in on it, what is it, I mean, you don't know.
Right.
So that's why we have our, that's why we have our zoning map, this is a general plan, I mean, uh, more or less, it's a quite slight other than. A couple little. Pokes of paint on it and. And everything has changed as we went along anyway. I mean. Uh, do we really wanna attack another map too? I mean, we want another one to work on.
Let's move on to things that. These people in the room want us to do, that's my opinion, but. But I could be here all night, it's up to you guys.
Well, maybe there just needs to be a footnote that says that, you know, ac- actual. Sizes not. It doesn't actually represent. But I mean, I, I don't know why we even have this map if this is, if this is the level of detail that we're. We're giving, I mean, I, I just see all that purple and there's not hardly that much. On our proposed map for, for industrial, so.
And maybe we need to readdress that proposed map, cause.
On our map or on our proposed map.
All that in Lisbon Valley is. Gonna be mining industrial.
Zoom in on that, would you, Mac?
Which one?
On our proposed map to Lisbon Valley. So we did have a couple parcels of.
Where do you want me to go?
Uh, Lisbon Valley, uh.
I mean, we did talk about doing a lot more industrial and that didn't really.
I mean, cause even, even right now, we're thinking, um. I don't know, I think we got the copper mine covered, right?
You're right there. Keep coming down.
That right there?
Yeah, and that's, that's fine enough. We got the copper mine covered, but you know, they're starting to dig another mine northwest, I'm pretty sure that's not. Industrial either.
But is maybe that's considered multiple use?
Well, if it's state federal land, why does it have? I mean, federal land.
I like the pink, I think it looks great.
I'd like to change all the greens to yellows and the blues to reds and the, no, I'm just.
Well, that's the main thing is it is a general. By no means is general.
Future, yeah.
But it does, it does show like we want around the cities, these towns like.
Yeah, cluster.
Where infrastructure is, we want. That, those uses to be there.
But and we also need to be able to say what the different places are though.
Yeah, but I mean, like, you know, that's height.
Well, that's height, I can get height, but I, I, you know.
I mean, and if that's a park service entry building, then I guess they have a vending machine and it needs that next thing.
I can follow up with those who put labels on them, um.
So Mac, let's say we move forward with this map. What aspects of the general plan are we still? Waiting for?
Just any changes you all want to make.
But not the water.
The, so that's a different element.
Okay, so this is just the land use.
This is just land use. Yeah, so we put the land use on fire, but we do have to have the water element, we're continuing to work on it. That one's a bigger conversation and much more analysis. So we touched on it in the land use. And so we just kind of have that note on there. Um, but the land use element is a different section that you have to look at once with the analysis. But it's included language to it, pointing to the fact that land use and water are tied together. Going back to what Cody mentioned.
I'd like to go under the, do we wanna do the residential or not residential, the recreational? Support. What are people's feelings there?
So in the mixed use language, multiple use, um, it talks about recreation. In here, um. So it's in the multiple use, the recreation part of it, when we looked at. The zoning future, when you look at recreational support on here, it's kind of that. Hate to use it, but that residential or that commercial flex where you're, you're flexing from one thing to go to another and so you're kind of. Backed up against public lands, so you're, those uses would support it, but. Part of that discussion that you guys had a couple of planning commissions ago is like, well. Let's remove recreational support altogether of our zoning ordinances, um, try to simplify the zones. And then, so that's kind of where it was. Shelled was if we're taking out of the zoning, let's not include recreational support in the general plan.
I'm fine with getting rid of it. Yeah, and.
I have, I have a comment, but real quick, sorry, but like, who, who likes it, who's like. We don't, we usually have our Pat Creek people here, are they? I mean, I'm.
They wanted residential.
I mean, they're just seem like we got two totally mixed.
Right.
On that, you know.
But was that just in, in worry that we're adding another zone and we want this instead of that type of thing?
Because I mean, if you're just, if you're just residential. I don't know if I necessarily love that, because there are those, you know, like the little. Those areas are a long ways from other places, so there's that little support building, it's the. It's the water, it's the propane tank being filled, it's the. You know.
Which falls in the multi use.
Which is fine, but they don't like multi use. A lot of them.
I thought multi use was less, um. Well, looking at the way other counties are using multiple use, that's more your conservation land, less residential zones. Um. But Pat Creek, they wanna be residential, my understanding is because recreational support. Allows for overnight accommodations and they're, they're like, you know, other folks in unincorporated Monticello or. Or parts of the county who want to stay residential, um, or, uh, art agriculture. Um. So that they're not turning into a glamping campground, overnight rental kind of. Tourist community, um. But recreational support in the other counties, they're using that for things like glamping like. Yeah, cabins and not long term residences, but. Identifying those places that can support camps or. Moab under canvas or whatever, those kind of places, um. But I don't think we need it because even if you had that zone, I think the. Common practice is that you, it requires a conditional use anyway. To do some of those uses in that zone, but I think they were just identifying where in their county that. Is kind of existing like in the mountains, was it in, um. Maybe Garfield County, they were, there's places that families go like in the, you know. Season to camp and they have cabins, they're not staying there year round, but that would be a recreational support zone, for example. But not, I don't think we should turn residential areas into recreational support zones.
No, I, I don't either, I, I just, none of those people here, I just. I mean, I, I don't care, I would like to have a do anything you want zone. But I don't think we're gonna get that through, but. But I mean, I just, it just seemed like when we had Pat Creek here, there was two different feelings and I wasn't sure.
There was.
But they were true, but I think it was because we were giving them that, it wasn't, they didn't come to us and ask for that. It was.
But when the map is made, they're gonna wanna be residential.
Yeah, I, I think it was, I think it was because it was being pushed on them and they were being given the option.
It's gonna be half and half.
Well, cause the ranch is all. Short term rentals.
So if you make, if you make residential, you'll not have short term rentals in it, then half of them are gonna wanna be something besides residential, right? And it should be something other than multi use, cause they're not gonna like multi use either, cause to me, multi use is to do anything you want zone. I mean, not really, that's tongue in cheek, but you know, it's a lot of people like, well, I wanna be ag, I wanna be eight, what, like. But multi use works really well, I mean, you can. Run cattle in multi use, you can have your farm in multi use, your steel tacks, green belt that has nothing to do with this. But if you wanna do bull hollow. That's fine as well, you know?
Okay, Mac, on your general plan verbiage. Page thirty three or twenty seven, whatever, where it's talking about agriculture.
Let's see on the uses.
So, uh, incidental uses to agriculture allowed as well, such as living quarters, sheds, storage, et cetera. I don't know that I like having just that list, maybe we ought to make it a little bit more inclusive, maybe add some verbiage like, uh. Or anything else that supports agricultural production, you know what I mean?
Okay, yoga studios.
Yoga studio, yeah, right, if a dude, if a dude's having trouble paying his bill, selling his wheat and he wants to start a yoga studio.
Tell him his what?
In his barn, sure.
So add to that right there.
Yeah, yeah. Is that hot yoga or just regular? Whatever pays the bills, bro.
I'll show you an example of that language. Real fast. It's not King County, Garfield. Try to find it real fast. In Garfield, um, so this is their, their zoning. It's like uses normally and necessarily related to agriculture are permitted and uses. Adverse to the continues of agriculture activity are not allowed, and so if we took that. That first part of that, so something similar to that in that language.
Yeah.
Not as a permitted, but just to complete that sentence instead of.
Go ahead, Ann.
Well, I was just gonna say that would anybody argue that a yoga studio would be adverse to agriculture with that production?
I like that.
I mean, not that I'm arguing for yoga studios on ag, but you know, you, there's a lot of things that you could say. Are not adverse to agriculture, what, what's adverse to agriculture is permanent buildings that can't. Where the land can't be turned back into ag after it's been tr- you know.
With painting goats, I mean, or goats, that's a real thing.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think you could use that entire phrase.
Okay.
My point was, I, I believe we had a young man in here earlier that was running a farm, but was also starting a business. Doing metal buildings, right?
Yeah.
So technically making a metal building is not agriculture. However, he's using that business to keep his agriculture business going, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so in my mind, if, if, if a guy, if, if a agricultural producer. Finds some other income stream that he can make work on his land, I don't think we should be restricting that.
Yeah, the hobby farm type.
Sure, whatever, yeah.
Well, I always think it's interesting that gravel pits mustn't have to be zoned agriculture.
They have to, you cannot rezone them, so they are what they were back when the Utah law changed. And so that's why you see some of them are still that highway commercial district in Spanish Valley. That's because that's the, that's the gravel pit, others were agriculture. And you have to keep them, you cannot rezone them.
Yes, but I'm always like, well, how does ag and gravel go together? Well, it does, I mean, it's, if you've owned a farm like I own a farm.
Yeah.
You know, and, and have a gravel, have, have had, don't have currently, but it's a way to pay the bills, you know?
Makes cows wait more, as you go to auction.
I mean, yeah, well, I mean, you know, so you, you sell some gravel, I mean, it's, it's.
They're gonna eat rocks.
Come from the land, you know?
Yeah, that's what my grandpa said.
Adverse to agriculture.
And where this is a general.
Mac, the. You know, we mentioned the survey.
Yeah.
And then, you know, a few questions are. Answered of the results of the survey. Is the survey results gonna be attached to?
No.
Not, not in the general plan?
Nope.
Okay.
I just gave that to you, so we had more information.
Yeah, cuz it just didn't seem to fit.
No, it wouldn't, and so, no, we had, it, it references them.
Yeah.
Even the points survey that we did for the housing study, it references that, it'll reference the. As the sitla, uh, that Spanish Valley plan, references that, those are all. Appendices to the general plan.
Good.
When I got here and read the general plan, Geeky County Administration thing and city managers do the same thing as you go through and. You read the general plan and that's where I found the survey, the initial survey as an appendix, and so. You just add those as information.
Good.
But it's not part of this section.
Melissa, I wanna thank you for spending a lot of your time on cleaning this up.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So. How do you all feel about the Kane County language, putting that in here about agriculture?
The Garfield County?
Garfield County, whatever county.
On the agriculture.
Yeah.
I think I like it better than what we currently have.
I like it better than what we have.
Okay, that completes.
Us more wiggle room.
Openness, yeah, that, it's not quite an all-purpose, everything goes zone. But theoretically, you know, your agriculture is. Let them, let them be agriculture and if it's a hobby farm, in theory.
I hate to tell you, they're almost all hobby farms in San Juan County.
Yes, that's what, that's what we are.
Yep.
So I have a problem with low-density residential.
It's good. In agriculture?
No, as a, as a category.
I just read that a minute ago.
Okay, where are you looking?
Yeah, so, so it sounds like everybody wants to switch the agriculture to what they say in Garfield. But I don't like how it says low-density residential, I mean, I'm.
Point me to where you're reading.
So, so the same.
Where you were.
It's where you were.
On the use?
Yeah, on the uses, it, it going up. It says low-density residential. And, um. That's, that's not what we're doing with our residential. We've got residential where we've got. Multiple buildings on a lot.
But, and the ag land has a certain acre to be. Qualify as ag, you have to be a certain size, right?
Yeah, but this isn't, but, but I'm not talking about ag, I'm talking about the residential as the category, the land use designation.
Yeah, I feel like we're kind of missing like the residential, residential altogether, right?
Uh, yeah.
You could say the low-density residential is what we used to call our, our rural residential, but there's nothing.
We need another residential.
Right, for like a Spanish Valley.
Like Spanish Valley, higher density.
Right.
Agreed. So do we take a, cuz unincorporated areas with lack of infrastructure. You're typically promoting your larger lot sizes and lower density. You want your higher-density development to focus in those areas that are already incorporated and not unincorporated.
Yeah, but we're also talking about affordable housing.
Correct.
And we're talking about, I mean, we were having.
In those transitional area, yes, and so, we could, you could take out. That low-density, take that off of there. And just leave it as residential, but you.
Well, we don't wanna encourage high-density on ag land.
But you can, you can get that in your zoning, if you're zoning lot sizes. You know, right now for, for agriculture, the minimum lot size is an acre, and so.
Oh, it's only an acre, okay.
Yeah, so if you fixed it in, in your zoning, you know, you're stuck at lot sizes in. In your zoning ordinance, not necessarily your general plan, this is overall, if you're allowing high-density. In your general plan, then, then your zoning should also match that high-density. Throughout, and most of the counties that are rural are focused more on the lower density, they just don't have the infrastructure. And so, why would you wanna encourage a high-density without that infrastructure that? When you looked at the, the land use, um, the PUD that we did, um, there Wilson Arch. We had a lengthy discussion about water availability and that density that is in that area. You know, and that water element became critical for that, and so if you don't have the water infrastructure and, and. It'll demonstrate that in the conversation that I had, uh, with Eastland, they're like, hey. We're, we're about out of water, you know, and we can't develop more homes, and so. If you take that and spread that throughout that county, throughout that, with that thought. Um, if you're promoting a higher density in the unincorporated areas, it's like we can't service them, you don't have. And you, you're taxing more EMS, you're taxing more of your, your water, your sheriff, because your, your roads. You're pushing more of a density out. Whereas the general plan in its entirety, as I've read through there, really focuses the higher density. Closer towards those incorporated areas, Spanish Valley needs to become its town. And all, and then it makes sense outside of Spanish Valley, it's like, yeah, we, we still continue to, to promote the agriculture and. That larger lot size. Hearing back from some of the public comments where I was like, and the survey reason, points to that as well as. We still value agriculture here and we would rather have the higher acreage than the higher density.
But it's up to you, those are just the arguments and some thoughts.
I, I get the, the intent, but we've already allowed so much. With the Wilson Arch thing and all this, like, less than one acre lot sizes, but. Now what do we do? Do we, I feel like we should, kinda with Melissa, like, we should allow for that stuff because we've been allowing it, so it should be in our.
Well, and it, it is kind of a plan going forward, right, as you are gonna have.
Future plan.
Not a high-density, but a higher density in Spanish Valley than the rest of the county.
Even LaSalle, I mean, LaSalle, you're looking at some growth in LaSalle, you know, and.
Yeah.
At least one I come across.
I'd still call that low-density, right, but, but anyway, I, I, I kinda feel the same way that we, we were missing. A little paragraph in here about a residential type land use designation, but. In our case is almost specifically Spanish Valley.
And low-density residential will exist in our larger ag lands anyway.
Yes.
So we don't need a, we don't actually need a. District that's low-density residential, we just need the regular residential.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I honestly, I think, you know, just add, add in, le- leave low-density how it is and add in a residential that. Has its own language.
So add a paragraph on there, just residential and say, we promote. Residential, more growth.
Yeah, right.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing tied into that.
Sure.
I'm pretty sure that points survey specifically was advising the county not to have. Low-density residential, to move away from that. Um, that there was language in it, just, just saying that could be contradictory.
Okay.
Was that the, uh, was that the survey included in the packet?
The, the, no, the points one, the one we paid the. Yeah, the housing survey, um.
Dwelling on the future and it, it just highlighted the fact that. We've gotta do something here to, to get more housing, um, workforce housing. Kind of, it was focused on the workforce housing side of it is, we're losing population and, you know, if you. Try to move here and you have to pay. You know, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars for a home, then a lot of people aren't gonna move here, so we've gotta fix. That or the trajectory that they showed is we are going to continue to lose population. Um, throughout time. So we can add a paragraph on there, just normal residential, the, the county encourages, encourages. Residential growth throughout the county, and then you would tackle it within your zoning.
Yeah.
On your lot sizes, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
So get rid of the word low-density and just call it residential.
Somebody mentioned they like the low.
I mentioned that.
Okay, but you mentioned a second category, so either have two categories or get rid of the word low-density.
And then a, then a general residential, and that'll cover you. Rural, what we're seeing in LaSalle, what we're seeing in Spanish.
Rural residential, whatever you wanna call it.
Maybe rural resident, rural residential and residential, that makes more sense.
But rural residential should be more than one acre, right?
One of those lot residential is one acre minimum.
That, that's where I think we get, then we're just call, it's basically the same thing, low-density.
You've got lots in Spanish Valley under acre.
Yeah, they're quarters.
Yeah. So.
But that's not rural residential.
You're right, that's normal residential.
That's why we're making two categories.
Two categories, yeah.
So just call it residential.
Yeah, the higher-density one residential and the lower-density one.
Put high-density, that's an indication that you're. You're pushing for your quarter acre. Infill. Okay, so we'll add a residential paragraph, you're okay with that one, we'll take out recreation on there. Fix some of the coloring on the map. Anything else with the goals, okay, Melissa?
So, uh, so somewhere in all of that, the land you, uh, the. The area we're in right now.
Okay.
Going back on up, I don't think it talks about sitla land in there at all, and I think there needs to be a reference to sitla land. Whether it's, cuz it's not public lands, it's not tribal lands, it's sitla lands, under land use designations.
The Spanish area plan, Spanish Valley, Spanish Valley area plan is the sitla component to this, but it.
But there's all sorts of little, other little pockets of sitla. And there's gonna be even more north of Bluff now, that's unincorporated.
Incorporates the approved state institutional trust land administration, community structure plan, that's Spanish Valley. And so it touches on that sitla piece.
Yeah, but there's sitla.
Throughout.
Throughout.
Yes.
So, I, I think we need to acknowledge there is sitla throughout.
Okay.
I, you could make it its own category, trust.
Well, very first paragraph has some language about the county. Under jurisdiction of either a federal agency or the Navajo Nation, why don't you just put in state or federal?
Add, add sitla there.
Well, is it under the jurisdiction, it's not under the. Is it under the jurisdiction of sitla? No, I don't think that's.
Well, and ownership of either a federal agency or the Navajo Nation, maybe that's where you stick sitla's name in there.
A state, comma, federal agency or the Navajo Nation.
But, but further, further down, it has tribal lands and it has public lands, right? There, those are actually pulled out.
That comes under the public.
Yeah.
And then sitla. Comes on, yeah, it just needs to be mentioned.
Okay, so just mention it here on the ownership.
I wouldn't put it there, I'd put it in the public land section, cuz it, it says jurisdiction and ownership, because that's true. For federal and Navajo Nation land, but sitla is just ownership.
Okay.
And.
So where, where'd you put that?
Uh, that section we were just in.
In the public land section?
No, no, in, we were, we were talking about the different designations like residential and agricultural. There are also public lands and tribal lands in there, that's where I think there needs to be some reference to it.
I see.
And Mac, we probably oughta change the name, cuz it's no longer.
It's no longer sitla.
Yeah. What is it? It's state trust administration.
Oh, is that?
S T.
Is that, I thought it was trust lands administration.
I can look and see.
It's S, S T A.
Uh, okay.
S T A, sta. So still lands.
Still lands.
Okay.
Double check that though.
Anything else? How about goals on here, were you okay with the goals? That were on here, do those, are those still? Useful goals. When I read through here, I couldn't think of any changes that. Would be in conflict with what we're heading. We did add, working with that inland port, and you'd seen that in the red. Lines document that was provided. A while ago.
Does the county have a trails master plan, I was wondering that earlier.
So the state has been working on an overall statewide trails plan, um they just released that. Couple of weeks ago.
Statewide?
So we do have that um and then you're starting to see more efforts throughout the county um to the north. In Spanish Valley, you have the trail there that we partnered with. Grand County to develop and then bluff around the bluff area, wanting to go into to make to Monazuma Creek. There's a proposed trail there, uh when we met with UDOT um couple of years ago. UDOT has really been on an effort to connect trails throughout the state, so you can go top to bottom. Part of that continuing that thought is how do we get trail connected from Grand County down through San Juan County going all the way through? Um is it using, you know, the mountain trail networks that we have and connecting to those? And so there's been work efforts on that trail, the county specifically doesn't have a trail master plan. It was really just that work effort with. With UDOT.
What's the one you partnered up with grand?
Which one?
The one you partnered with grand on?
Mud Springs. Yeah, that's that new trail that they completed or completing the first phase now. At that Mud Springs Trail. The county originally had applied for funding for that, it's in partnership with. Sta or Sitla. The Sitla, B L M and Grand County. Um and that's down by the rifle range, shooting range.
Oh, that's the one right at the bottom of.
Right at the bottom of the hill that people are complaining.
Place to turn off.
And we're working on that one as well, if you if you have a couple million dollars to to do a pullout there, we're looking for. For money for that because um and that's a. Uh high school in Duro Track, but not bike racing in Duro Track. Where they're anticipating having more races there and hopefully. Championship being hosted there within the next couple of years.
Mud Springs, who named it Mud Springs?
But yeah, they are, they're finalizing that first phase of the development um. There's a couple more phases that are planned for that. They tell me it's gonna be awesome, a lot of people are coming here um. To San Juan County that participate in those races. The original plan was hopefully we can get the high schools to. To have a mountain bike team as well and start utilizing some of the trails around here in the future.
Oh, state, the state mountain bike is like thousands of people, it's camper city.
Yep.
Yep.
So said that their participation on it obviously was the land as well as kind of a poking law out there so that. When people do come, they kinda have a little bit more infrastructure there.
There's like a. That uh I always used to say it was. Kins Lake right at the bottom of Blue Hill.
Right.
But there's a. City up there.
Oh, absolutely, they hide right behind the old shooting range there, right below the old highway.
That's where we did the VFW on through there.
Yeah.
Holy cow.
A lot of people camp there.
They can pack them in there too.
It's had a homeless population there in the summertime.
And I'm sure those campers are never two weeks or more.
We just get a lot of long stayers there. And I I I wouldn't necessarily call them homeless, they're just. They'll stay at work for a couple of months and they'll have and they just, yeah.
Then or.
Yeah. Anything else we need to add? So I'll make those changes.
I'm sorry, I feel like I have to bring this up, cause it's a kind of a mix um giving. The language at the bottom here of our goals um. It's kinda sending mixed messages when I read it, coming from the Spanish Valley perspective. That um we're supporting creation of area plans such as the Spanish Valley Plan. When pressure begins to mount and then we're on and then the. Then it's above that is only approving zone changes and development applications that conform to the future land use map of this plan, so. If we end up getting rid of the, if we end up rezoning Spanish Valley. Out of this whole let, you know, countywide ordinance. And it doesn't match the Spanish Valley Plan where. We might run into problem there, does that, is anybody else following that logic?
So take out that paragraph altogether.
Yep.
Cause the future land use map in this general plan was a high level. And we had a discussion on that tonight of. You know, do we get specific or do we keep it high level and? My read from that was we're keeping it high level and not being specific and so.
I agree.
If we're not being specific, if we take that language out, then there's not a conflict.
So we're talking about taking out.
That.
The top paragraph or the second?
This one here, only approves zoning changes and development applications that conform.
I thought she was talking the next one down.
Consider it, cause. You know, you know me, I think that Spanish Valley does need different treatment and the fact that these goals say that is like. Well, why are we? Looking at Spanish Valley um as in. Uh under the this umbrella of the countywide ordinance, I mean. If you take those things out, then you might as well take out mention of the Spanish Valley area plan. In the first paragraph. You know, it just feels like. At one side of the county, you know, the mouth is saying, we want everybody the same. And then on the others, you know, on these, this language, it's saying, no, we want to encourage this. Um kind of force slide for sight and planning for areas that are growing, so which is. Because I think it's good that we have the Spanish Valley Plan um. But as we go through the zoning map. I think we wanna make sure that our, any zone changes we make are. Compatible with the Spanish Valley Plan.
See, I think that third one right there is supporting the creations of area plans, that ones. I mean, that's pretty general, it's just using Spanish Valley as an example where. The one above it would be the one you would remove, right?
It does read like you're specifying a a different plan. Instead of like, yeah, you're highlighting it as its own plan and not as a San Juan County's.
Incorporate in the future, I mean.
Well, if nobody has a problem with it, then I guess just leave it, but. It's. You know, this land use map or this plan that were the general plan. Is the same idea as the Spanish Valley general plan, we're not talking, I'm not talking about the ordinance. Um but that whole book that Sitla in the county paid to have done of the Spanish Valley. Uh general plan, I think it was, or area plan, the Spanish Valley area.
Yeah. I don't know about that, but to me, if you get rid of that, it keeps us high, like you were saying, just high over. You know, less specific. And still encourages the area plans.
Yeah. Since there's already a plan that exists for the Spanish Valley.
I like that Spanish Valley area plan um. That participation with Sitla there. Such a huge chunk of the property and it it kind of shows their cards of what. They intend to have developed in the area, which helps us develop the framework for the rest of Spanish Valley. So you take and you you apply that to Wilson Arch. You know, as we looked at that plot map and that kinda gave us any indication of what that community originally intended. As far as uses in that area, that we use that as a guiding guiding point to. To that PUD that was approved, when you you take like these areas of La Salle. You know, and or Eastland, some of these places that have that community cluster. Um kind of helps overall that makeup.
I think we can do both things and ask if we, you know, they. They are in conflict with one another, and I guess they kinda are, but on the same hand. They, we can do both, you know, we can always keep in mind that, you know, Spanish Valley has its own goals. In mind, you know, and and but we wanna treat. Everybody in the county the same, same ordinance or the same. Same overall arching plan, but realizing that someday Spanish Valley will. Here bluff can incorporate, anybody can, so you should, Spanish Valley should be able to someday.
What if it were to say something like, instead of getting rid of it? So it'd be something like cons- considering the future land use map of this plan. When or re- reviewing the future. Land use map of this plan when considering zone changes and development applications. Instead of saying only approving.
Yeah.
Just taking into account the future.
Kept softening it.
Yeah, consulting with, there you go.
Softening the language.
Softening the language and and get rid of only, which is black and white.
Okay.
Good thing we got good lawyers.
Good question. This is the best lawyer in the room. Any other? Changes on the goals.
I don't have anything else.
Cody has a list.
You you know, he's about run out of his. That that list.
He's like, hey.
Okay.
Okay, direction for me, what do we wanna do, do you want me to? Incorporate the changes, I'm just thinking on timeline and meetings. Incorporate the changes and bring them back to next planning commission so you can see. Cause there's been. Quite a few things that you've changed on here. And then you would be into January, push it out to the public, the public hearing?
Yep. No, let's just, let's just do the changes and put it out to a public hearing, we don't need to wait till January, let's go.
Cause you may have changes after you hear from.
Every time, every time we can discuss this, we can change it.
Okay.
So are you all in agreement with that?
I trust you, Mac.
Also, I'll make the changes, send it to you beforehand, um to make sure I've captured your thoughts correctly. And so, Ann, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Schedule a public, so I'll push this out, have that community group help us get it out as far reaching. As we can, we'll schedule a public hearing all in December. Okay.
That's a lot to get done.
But you gotta, so you gotta get it to us quickly. Because you have to notice it.
Piece in there, cause.
You gotta notice it.
I am, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and it has to be a part of that.
Yeah.
Tomorrow is December. Exactly.
These years fly by. Not fast enough is worse.
Land use ordinance discussion direction.
So last time you had requested that land use table. When I, so before a couple commission meetings ago, you had. Tristan had presented chapters one through six, chapters one through six of the twenty twenty five. Are all, it's really the legal process, a lot of the paragraphs in that. Reference the state. Land use ordinance and so. Um or code, so because that, we would incorporate those first few chapters into this and then I. In thought, getting down to. Our ordinance and you all have the ordinances now in your books, so you can refer to those in the twenty eleven. It just highlights our zones, so let me see, I have it up here somewhere. That is not ours. Okay, so in our zones, this is, this is kind of how it presents itself. Um so you go through your multi- multi-use agricultural, rural residential. Uh and then what's permitted? In the Spanish Valley. Ordinance, I don't have it up, in the Spanish Valley, it breaks it out into chapters. Where Spanish Valley Residential is its own chapter. So to me with those thoughts, I'm like, okay, how am I? Am I supposed to expand the twenty eleven zone to include more? In chapter form, like the Spanish Valley? In chapter form, then I started looking out to other counties. And that's kind of where. I stumbled across how. Garfield County is doing theirs, they. They don't necessarily have it in. The chapter, but they they bulked it all together. Um so in agricultural, they have their uses, it had that language that that I liked that, hey. If we're missing something, but it fits in agricultural, makes sense, then it's allowed. Um and then here's kind of the permitted uses on there with the conditional uses broken down. Um you go to. King Counties, um King Counties is a little bit different, I wish everybody was the same, but they're not. Uh when you get into King Counties, they had more um. PUDs on their uses, but still broke it down into. This agricultural residential use, uh then you get into. Uh there was another in Emery County. Emery County, they go wild and crazy on theirs, uh where they. They look at a use and give it points, if that use fits, then you get higher points and you're trying to reach a thousand points. By based off of the formula and conditional uses, conditional uses on a tier. Um and so they've got an L one tier, L two tier. L one tier is basically s- on a conditional use coming in. Um staff can approve it if it's an L one conditional use. L two planning commission approves it, L three commission has to approve it, so they kind of. Broke out of this conditional use, when I was looking at our use table. That I sent to you where we last left off, you have a lot of conditional uses in there. So I'm like, how do I, how do I mesh? Spanish Valleys chapters into a simplistic. Twenty eleven, do you want the Spanish Valleys to be? That. Style, or do you want us to break twenty eleven out into chapter where A one is? Everything is all inclusive in the A one, lot sizes, um things like that, the PUD right now in the twenty eleven. Is is still, it's an overarching chapter itself. But it still highlights the underlying use, so you can do a PUD in all of our zones, A one. The mixed use for highway commercial um. So I still like that process where still have to meet the underlying, so if it's. Spanish Valley residential and you wanna do a PUD, you still have to comply with that um underlying zone. In nature and so as my thoughts ran wild and how to mesh these two together, I. Came into conflict with. Paragraph form or chapters, um I like. The simplistic nature of it, when you're administering the ordinance in the paragraph form, but. When you apply it, it can sometimes get a little bit difficult if it's not. Circular in the language itself and by that, I mean, you know. When you try to apply that in the Spanish Valley for a conditional. When you try to apply that in the Spanish Valley for a conditional use, it gets all crazy. When we apply the light. Ordinance portion of Spanish Valley, it gets all crazy because it's not all circular to all the zones and so. Think if we watch for that, we'll be fine, but just trying to figure out in. Most of them, I seen smaller use tables, I like the Garfield approach on the agriculture as if it fits. But then for me, I worry on the staff level is now that's really subject to the. To the employee that we have in there and, you know, say we hire. A city planner and they don't understand agriculture and do they really understand that yoga with goats is a real thing and? The less subjective it can be, the better, but yet you don't want a long ordinance like. I mean, when I looked at Wayne County, I looked at Emery County, they're yeah, hundred ninety-five, two hundred pages. In their ordinances, small counties. But it's all inclusive of everything similar to the twenty twenty five ordinance that we had. As you're trying to be all inclusive in an ordinance, um, it gets lengthy, less simplistic. So just trying to figure out what is, hopefully you were able to to do some research on your own. Look at those other counties out there, um, come up with some ideas of how. How we pull these two together. When I, when I go from the twenty and I've sho- I've been flipping back and forth through the maps. When you look at the maps on. The old twenty eleven, so we're still utilizing this everywhere else other than Spanish Valley. Um, the map is pretty simple, um, but the zones are simple in it. One of the conflicts that I have is highway commercial, so highway commercial, you don't see it on here. Um, it's it's kind of hidden unless you know that it's there, but. We have that that thousand foot on here, that's the grayed out area that follows the highway. That's all that highway commercial district. When you get into the Spanish Valley, when they did the highway commercial on here. They had a different thought, instead of just keeping that thousand foot buffer on each side of the road. They expanded it out to the high, to the river. And the, I remember Lloyd being in that discussion, Lloyd's like, well, that river changes. The river changes with each flash flood that we have down through here and so. Do we go back to the thousand foot in here or do I keep? This zoning consistent here, but then further down. You morph back into that thousand foot. Highway commercial along the highways. So that was kind of where I left, when I tried to mesh those all together, those were some of the conflicts I had.
So we're keeping highway commercial? In twenty five?
So what, yeah, I don't think you were here, I was hoping you'd watch our YouTube. Just for fun, so where we left off on the ordinances ditched the twenty twenty five. Other than that legal languages that is required to update. We would take the twenty eleven, so we're going back to twenty eleven and. Trying to mesh everything together with the Spanish Valley twenty nineteen meshed in at twenty eleven. Um, and the legal language from twenty twenty five. Go back to simple is kind of what the message was. So I just need that guidance on the zoning, how do you want that to look? In Spanish Valley, um, we've got those different flex zones from. Kind of my understanding is get rid of the flex, um, go highway commercial. What do we do with this overlay? Um, these are the overlays, this map needs to be updated, we we approved this in twenty twenty three. These are the overlays that have been approved, we have the the two others that are missing on here. Um, from Sheik Khan, when he had the overlays approved, so we're missing those. He says, I just don't know what you want me to do with that.
That's that's great, Ann can tell me what to do there, but like, um. I'm just looking then that kind of changes the use table a little bit, if we continue at the highway commercial. Like if that's say north of Blanding, south of Blanding, if that thousand feet, that's what we're going back to, is that what I'm? So I'm just looking just right off the, just boom, uh, butcher shops, you know, we've got highway commercial. It's not permitted. Right?
Correct, so and if you're keeping with this use table.
So I'm just saying like it needs to be permitted, I mean, like we need to go back through this use table then and fix some of these because. I'll I'll catch all kinds of, well, heck. If we, cause we've, you know, we've gone out of our way on a lot of things right there as far as like, uh. How about taxidermy? I mean, that was one we talked in twenty five, they're gonna now be in highway commercial rather than multi-use, so. Is that permitted? You know, the butcher shop needs to be permitted because Richie Monson's there and he needs.
Taxidermy is not an allowed use.
So it it needs to be then, I mean, I.
No, I think taxidermy is further up, it's under something else.
It's under what one?
I don't remember.
I guess my point is like we just really need to go back through this used table and if that's the simplicity plan then.
Well, let me ask, do we need four pages of? Use tables?
Well, and what what kind of language are we gonna do then? Before, I know like my comments earlier that, you know. We've had so many different attorneys come in here and give us different opinions that if it is not mentioned in the use table. Going forward.
Don Bedsmann was like, okay, if not, but create a process that you can allow it.
So.
And so when you look at Garfield's.
So that 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 needs to be definitely.
Yes, absolutely.
Not just disallow, you know, like, okay, like it's prohibited, the process, the process to allow this. Well, sorry, I guess I I missed more than I thought I did, you guys actually did some good work.
For goods manufacturing.
Still not allowed.
I think we, I do think we need to work on it a little bit because the way it is right now, we cannot go back to the thousand foot commercial. In Spanish Valley, cause that's more or less the only place. That is legally right now, that is not the thousand foot commercial. Um, on any highway. So if a- at this point, I think what we would do is just go in there and adjust some things to make it work with what it is. And then, um, cause I know Sitla on that, the those parcels, they want to maintain what they had. Requested in that.
On this site?
Yeah, so if you, on, well, and and keep coming down. Um, so all this area right here is what their request was. So when we get to the end of this, um, Spanish Valley map, it goes right back to the thousand. Let's let Sitla, because this is what Elise and all them worked with landmark on to get their area done. Let's leave them alone and then we just have a minute little bit of privately owned in that area to work on. Because Sitla already planned their park, so let's leave all that alone. We'll take the thousand foot highway commercial right up to adjacent to that Spanish Valley plan. And then do the minute changes that we need in the in the privately owned area.
We talked about before having from Sunny Acres down to maybe Pat Creek Cut Off. Or even Ken's Lake Road or somewhere in that vicinity. Be multiple use on the east side of the highway. And that would, that would potentially, um. Make everything that's existing conforming.
Oh, you're talking adjacent to the highway, the east side of the highway?
Yeah, isn't that what you're talking about? Like for the the privately owned parcels that are existing as.
Yeah, I think your biggest problems is like, um. Sunny Acres, we talked about that, that area between the creek. Um, crossing which was approximately the thousand foot at the time, out to the highway. Being the, um, like a multi-use. But maintaining our commercial in that larger triangle that comes down to the Moab Business Park. But then Merriam Court is gonna have to be multi-use. And well, actually, and and it can be multi-use all the way down to Old Airport Road. Because we have an RV park, um, two, two lots down, well, no.
Because I remember the thinking was that highway commercial should be in lot, large lots. That haven't been already, you know, developed, so. We can still have highway commercial in that, you know. Truck stop zone and then south of airport, maybe, where wherever the other big. Lots are that haven't been developed, but the ones that are already existing with businesses on them. If we multi-use them, they could come into conforming, I have to double check that language, but I think. Multiple use would allow for lots of, would allow for everything that's existing and not make anybody non-conforming.
Yeah, so I I agree with you, like, Mac, if you'll go up a little bit, um. To Old Airport Road. So right there, um, from there up to the Moab Business Park, which is just above Merriam. Make that multi-use and then Moab Business Park up to the backside of, um, Sunny Acres Lots. Keep it a commercial, because that is all commercial there.
But it's not, you have nightly rentals.
These are nightly rentals.
Those are nightly rentals overlay, I mean, people live in the Moab Business Park, that's their residence.
Those are illegal anyway.
I know, but like Ann's saying, do we, do we, does multipurpose make that or multi-use make it conforming? Because it's there and that's what it is right now.
Because we would have to stop that at Old Airport Road, cause after that. You start jumping into a bunch of Legrand stuff there, you do have a couple.
Why can't it just all be multi-use other than our new truck stop zone?
Well, I mean. It would, it, it falls into the two thousand eleven one anyway, so we wouldn't have to worry about it at this point.
Well, they're already, if they're already approved, it wouldn't matter, right? So, I don't know, someday maybe, I mean. Can you do a truck stop in a multi-use, I don't know. But the largest parcels that have not been developed, I think should be more highway commercial, especially going south. Even though it's probably not buildable.
Truck stop is conditional. In multi-use.
Yeah, but I don't think it would impact anything, I I mean, I don't know, I'm not a. A lawyer, but whatever, I I think the goal really is to focus on the existing folks. Uses of their land and trying to figure out how to make them conforming. And multiple use, since those are a bunch of smaller parcels, seems reasonable as opposed to. Like the left side of the highway, that's Sitla undeveloped large parcels. And that is highway flex, right? The map I'm looking at is highway, they're all purple, which is highway flex.
Yes, you're correct. So, I mean, it seems that this is the only place we really have to change any of the mapping in for the two thousand eleven ordinance. Why don't we just set this as a discussion action item at a meeting? Instead of it just narrowing it down to the people that live there, let's just make it part of one of our next meetings to. Simple simplify the map, incorporate that into the rest of San Juan. And and then that way it falls in suit with the two thousand eleven ordinance with, um. The use table that we picked.
Okay, so, and now we're kind of, it'll help, you'll still have the control district highway, that's a gravel pit. Spanish Valley Residential, do you just?
It'll just be residential, yep.
See, I think we have to rethink that as well. Because we we need to see a map also with the, you know, like Mac, you mentioned with the overlays. The residential flex, because. I think we've got some, so like Lydia Court would. One of our maps, we were looking at changing that, we were talking about. Community commercial along Spanish Valley Drive, I mean, not that I'm sold on that either, but. It's. If we're going with residential flex for. She Khan Zone and then. Re- what you call it, res- Balanced Rock Resort, plus the other one, what the Valley Estates. We might. Be lose, you know, we're gonna be losing a lot of what is residential on this map, the old map. If y'all are looking at the one that's from two thousand and eleven.
Right. Which is fine because it's already been approved.
This one here, is this the one you're looking at, Ann?
Um, yeah, cause I I'm, you know, I'm remote, so I'm not seeing what y'all are looking at on your big screen, cause on the. Presentation, it's just the can use table, so I've got my own map pulled up.
Okay, hold on, let me.
And it's the one that's from the website, the amended twenty twenty one.
Sorry, I thought you were still seeing what we were showing.
No, that's, I'm kind of struggling, I'm sorry, guys, trying to keep up with what y'all are talking about.
So this shows the overlay districts that have improved. And trying to figure out, kind of going along with your thoughts where you have. The ones that are missing is sheik.
Yeah, so where is this map? This isn't public yet?
This one was, yes, it should be.
And the one that you're looking for was was never finalized.
Overlay, the, which one?
The little cul-de-sac, it was never finalized, it never went through the final process.
That was brought to me the other day, we're looking into that one.
The, that residential.
Partially mostly done.
Yeah, but it was permitted as residential and I asked Kristen, Ann, I asked the contractor. How it was being done because I had to assess it and they said, well, the overlays was never finished by Sheik, so. Um, we are building them as residential homes when we sign the permit for them to get it. And I brought that to everybody's attention not too long ago. Because I knew this was gonna snake in there and that was what I said from day one, when this, when this started.
Okay, Cory brought that up to me yesterday. So the overlay was approved, it like you'd mentioned, it hasn't completed, this one was approved. We have the development agreement, this is Sheik's other. Was approved, so we have a development agreement on this one, just not this one. Which is that final step.
And Mac, this map. Is not on our county website.
Okay.
That shows the overlays.
Right, that has any of this updated stuff from.
And this was just, we had approved this as the, um. The overlay map. This is the one that you're seeing.
The one on the west side.
So I I think it is really important that whatever has been approved. And it is official current map that it gets on the website.
Absolutely, it used to be on there.
I. Was it on, is it on there like in the? Under the proposed ordinance?
No, the proposed shows the that. GIS map.
Okay, so then it then then maybe it is on the county website. There's just the use table. You find it.
So this is the one that was twenty nineteen approved.
Yeah, it's on, it's on there, Anne.
You found it, okay. Yes, yeah, but when you open that map, is it the two thousand and eleven one?
No, current two thousand nineteen, and it's the same one the Mac showed right here.
Really, okay. I'm trying to find it.
So. We will bring a new map and.
Oh, so it is the old one.
Yes, final, just with the overlays added.
Wait. I'm okay, I'm just calling me crazy tonight.
It's not showing all the. Yes, it's not showing them. That was the old original ones. And Charles Charles not down there. So do we agree on that, let's bring this, this is my new amount back. And let's just ma- discuss it, make it an action item and move on.
And you're talking about a zone, changing the zoning p- map officially or propose?
It's not official until. We go through the process.
Okay, but you're. An action item to.
It was a discussion.
And then a public hearing, yep.
Okay, are we changing any other things like in, like Cody was saying, in Blanding or in the unincorporated?
Mine, mine would be to go through the use table for highway commercial and multi use then and. Those areas and make sure that same thing like Spanish Valley, those P L letter already.
To keep them conforming, the existing.
TJ did.
Hey, when Lloyd gives homework, I follow through on it.
He did too.
So. Hundred and twenty on there, is this the the revised version?
No, this is straight out of TC's little e-brain. Okay, so last month Lloyd said, go home, look at the use table, right, and figure out how you would change it or amend it. This is the first swag of that.
And I think you did great.
So you can see, I dropped your precious multi use that we've been talking about up tonight.
Which is more or less the same thing as the rural residential, looking at, looking at your use table. Sixty ones you only wanna get a problem with.
So this is. Just as much myself as anybody else here, so.
We should be able to, it can, it should be a conditional used in the rural residential, cause I mean, who doesn't want a golf course in their neighborhood?
Did you do this while you were at work?
Actually, I think it looks great.
Okay, so if we do this, though, the general plan, does it have multi use in there?
So you're just gonna change the name of that rural residential to multi use? You playing with that?
So short term rentals, what are they under? In your, are they under?
So this is the exact same.
One eleven.
The uses are the exact same one we have in our proposed.
Everything but.
Yep, everything but residential.
So they're not permitted in this new. Or this, I can't even read the yellow and residential.
Residential, that's right.
So they're permitted in all uses other than.
The yellow ones are agreed, sorry, that says residential.
Yep, residential, so they're permitted everywhere else, so they'd be in a mixed use agriculture. Highway, commercial, industrial.
And that's what the people wanted.
And that kind of keeps the Spanish Valley Residential secret.
So one other question, I I know it's out of the other one too, but you had um one oh seven and then you go back to. Forty two? So. You got permissible across the board except for industrial and then you've got conditional use. And rural conditional use and ag permissible in highway commercial. And then conditional and industrial. So the. Was that or, oh no, I'm sorry, one oh six, so you got a permissible across board, other and residential, okay.
Yeah, for a hundred percent.
Yep, that was the one I was. Concerned about. So more or less, they're kind of the same thing except for. The residential. Because this one, this one you're requiring a half acre. And the other one, I mean, more or less, your caps are gonna be.
I I think so, this is all a one for one from the proposed uses that are on our proposed table, right? And I believe we added forty two or maybe it was the other one, I don't know. Cause, cause I think we got into this discussion about how mobile home or trailer park is different.
Right, exactly.
Old boy parking his camper on his block, right?
Yes, yep. No, that was just questions, I no argument with that at all.
So a trailer park is which one?
Manufactured home.
Which one? No, like a, okay. Yeah, I don't think we'd ever clearly said that.
That, that's more or less what one oh seven is, RV and trailer park, yeah.
Okay, so single wide manufactured. What the hell, I mean, I don't know, I hate these, these different, a single wide, what is a single wide, single wide. Village, trailer house, trailer court, what it numbers that one?
It's trailer, one oh seven.
Sorry, I'm getting frustrated, I don't think it should be one oh seven, but.
Dude, I don't know.
But that's fine, I'm just wondering, is it permitted in highway commercial?
Yes, yes, it is. I see what you're saying, though, but.
So this means like we're gonna change.
But but let's not just rush.
Because you can't do a modular in a trailer park anyway, because they have to have permanent foundation, so any any HUD home.
Further away from everything.
I like it. Okay. As.
Discussed.
Let's go through TC's. It's much, much cleaner than what we've got. I like it.
Simplified.
So go through it at our next meeting?
Have it ready.
Have it ready at the next meeting, so it needs to be on the agenda.
Okay, TC.
TC, you did all the work, now everybody's gonna mark it out.
If you can send an email copy to Mac.
Yeah, we can add it. Then I'll work on that incorporation of Spanish Valley into the twenty eleven. And work on some of those, that circular language, make sure it's all all there. The um Spanish Valley, it does touch on the dark sky initiative compared to your twenty eleven. Um do I incorporate some of that language over?
Into the entire county?
Into the twen- to the rest of the county?
Everybody will. Find your house. Uh you're gonna go back to that overreach is what you're gonna get from everybody. Um I think if anything, you know, we've already got the the water part in there in our general plan. Um it's gonna be.
Yeah, we have to have that, yep.
So, I mean, that that's, that was a big one that was in the the overlay, or the. Spanish Valley ordinance, but I think you're gonna get so much kickback on that lighting.
I would argue the other side, though. I mean, people come here because it's a special place. And dark skies are drawing people to bluff.
Building code kind of pushes that anyways now with the energy efficiency.
You can see Las Vegas for hundreds of miles.
I know, and look at the people coming to see it.
I would say. Put it on there and see what people say.
I oppose.
And and with TC's.
Use table.
See if we filled in anything should come across that didn't come across.
Well, and if we add the language in that process, if we're missing things, it has a process to.
It just, I guess, I don't know why I'm saying this, cause it's pretty obvious, but if we go with TC's and then we. Have to spend a time looking at the map and making sure that multi use and. Which is, which is fine, I don't.
It's five things. Residential, multi use, high highway, commercial and industrial, five things, simplify it.
Oh, I, that's fine, no, I'm just saying, but we'll, I can tell you quite a few parcels that will. Will be like, okay, which one am I picking, and if I'm not multi use, where am I going?
Well, I mean, go back to the two thousand thirteen map.
But if the use taste, use table is open enough, which I think it is, looking at it, then. It's, it's an easy choice to make, you know, I mean, if.
So you're there surround landing.
So, I mean, what what is the?
Well, I just meant from, from the.
What is the zoning right there?
Twenty five map.
Oh, yeah, we're not looking at that map.
Or the twenty three even. This is thirteen.
What is that around blending, what, yeah, what is that for you?
So you have an enterprise zone and those are no longer in San Juan County, and then you have the. I don't know, the. Kind of that transition area where in this area around Blanding, we.
We asked blending what they want. We asked blending what they want.
As far as zoning.
Yeah, or is that in their annexation?
This is the annexation, future and annexation transition. Area.
So, so real quick question, so. In all areas of San Juan County, you have residential.
RR.
Just, yeah, just residential. Um and then you have agricultural, you have highway, commercial and industrial, what else do you have as it stands right now? Not including Spanish Valley.
Your commercial districts. Um those are in there. And then, so your highway commercial, your commercial districts that are broken out in three levels.
So, we're not adding or taking away anything that's not already in San Juan County with this. So it should be a pretty easy adjustment, w- we're not remapping the entire county. We're just gonna put in this ordinance in place and then the only thing we're remapping is that little section in Spanish Valley. Applying this to the already existing mapping in San Juan County.
So what am I, I mean, let's use this map, which is garbage to me. Okay, let's see if I can find my, where I am, I think I am, what is this little road? I mean, I couldn't tell you. I look at.
I mean, I had no.
Google Maps and pull this map up and.
I have no idea what the.
No, well, I live on Flower Mill Road, the end, so which one is Flower Mill Road, is it that one? Where is, is this around the world?
Yeah, I don't know.
Is this the Dairy Lane, I couldn't tell you, like, what's the blue here? Control District Industrial.
But Cody, my idea on this is, is if we can get this through, then we start approaching changing the mapping on the county. Let's, let's get the ordinance through.
And this, yeah, we will take this and push it into the GIS system. So you'll be able to narrow down into, okay, what's?
I am a hundred percent fine with doing anything, so I'm with you, Lloyd, I just, I just don't wanna be. To stick anybody in a box they don't wanna be in.
That's the thing is, is they're already in the box they're in right now, and all we're doing is putting. This on their box. And sticking with the eleven ordinance with the changes that we had to make due to. Um state laws. And then as after that's in place, then you start working through the rest of the area.
I I'm fine, I'm good with you, I'm just saying.
What do you think?
I, to this day, I still, using this map, I have no idea what I am.
There's not a, there's not a residential on this map. But not a residential.
So then.
So, so, so if your end goal is that be adding the Spanish Valley into our proposed ordinance. You probably need to. Make sure that we've got residential in this map.
Right, yeah. Because before it was all rural residential, which was creating large lots.
I would love to see us pass something and get something through, so I I don't wanna delay it.
One thing in thirteen years, that's all I ask.
But it has to be complete.
Can we leave draft, don't I?
Yeah, TC's gonna have draft on this one next time.
No, I feel like Scoot, Lloyd, you know, really, I'd like. What have we done since I, I, since I've been here and I haven't been here as long as you guys? I would love to have something better for everyone in the county. I would love not to be stoned every time we bring this up.
You're the one that came back that way from Vegas. Yeah, you went to Colorado, that wasn't our choice.
That's, that's not haze, that is cannabis. I have actually felt pretty good when I was there. I don't know, maybe it's just vacation or something else, I don't know.
Okay, we good?
Absolutely.
Building permits, you get, do you guys remember like six, seven months ago, we're standing at the top of the stairs? And I said. We have got to get this ordinance passed because I'm going to. What did I say? Egypt, that's.
Egypt, that's tomorrow. So, we didn't get it passed.
Yep. Okay, there's one final item, just the building permit video.
Lexi, are you still awake?
What page was that? I didn't see those.
So.
It's number five.
It's in your packet.
Yeah.
I don't think it was.
It's not in the packet.
Packet.
Okay. Oh, so, you're right, it's, it's on the website, it's on. Our system, it wasn't.
Wasn't in our packet, no, okay.
No.
Okay.
Cuz we, we missed it, we missed it, wondered it whenever I sent the packet.
Okay, so it's in here?
Then we updated it, yes.
Can you zoom in a little on this?
Yes.
Do you need glasses?
I still don't. Sorry, Mac, but I still don't see it in here, we're just sticking in here.
And she should have had it, she'll be the last.
It's not in here.
It's still item three.
Um, I have one change on this one, Cory.
The permit report?
Yeah. Spanish Valley, it's not Moab.
Oh, I know, they use that address.
It doesn't matter if you incorporate or not, if you're still using Moab's postal service, you still get the eight four five three two.
Yeah.
And they're building one in Mapleton.
Why, why is there a, why is there a permit without any info?
Which one are you looking at? I don't know. It's a secret.
Cancelled.
Deleted.
Yeah, I don't know, cuz it, in the I-Work system, if it's coming in, it, maybe if it wasn't filled out all the way, it's still assigned, I don't know. We can look into that one though.
Okay, that'd be good.
Cody, you gotta.
Motion adjourned.
Cory knows.
Second.
I don't see if they have a second or a vote or not.
See you, Cody.
See ya. I find that easy.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. Motion is second to, uh, adjourn, although it's a favor, say aye.
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 Bye.
Bye, Ann.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, good night.
For being here.
Bye, Lexi.